This meeting of February 5, 2020 is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law and was included in the list of meetings' notice transmitted to the Two River Times and the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on February 3, 2020. The meeting notices remain continuously posted as required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Proper notice having been given, the municipal clerk is directed to include the statement of the meeting for the minutes of the meeting. Now I'll call the roll. Councilmember Brazwell.
Here.
Councilmember Mizola.
Here.
Councilmember President Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Valkos.
Here.
Mayor Bruyan.
Here.
All the president's quorum is formed.
What?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Do you have a second discussion?
No, apparently we're doing the economic development workshop on 63.
Okay, my report's pretty brief this time around. Catons Cove and Shadow Lawn will be an executive session. The Economic Development Committee did meet with Bay Avenue Ventures to discuss the best zoning application to be placed on the business district. I think it was a very, very productive meeting with their planner. Meetings met with Tourism, Amanda Stone, and as I mentioned before, there's going to be a great focus on promoting the Bay Shore from Ameth County for day trippers. I went to the Communication Committee meeting last night, which again was productive. We have a Bay Shore 2020 Steering Committee next week. I'll fill you in at the next meeting. Ameth County Regional Chamber of Commerce on the 12th. We have a Twin Lights trustee meeting on Wednesday, February 19th, and I'm going to attend the Highlands Film Festival meeting on 2/27. Twin Light Lighthouse trees, 15 have been earmarked to be either trimmed or cut down. We're waiting for an estimate. Hopefully that estimate will be, we will have that for our board meeting so we can take action at that meeting, and I can update you on what's going on with that particular property and the 15 trees. In your packet, clipped together, are facility rates from different municipalities. I attempted to put this on a spreadsheet, but it's very, very difficult because so many towns have so many different moving parts, weekends, Class 1, 2, and 3. So what I did is I picked the ones that I thought would best represent Highlands, in my opinion, but I also put in there things like weddings, videos, bonfires. There's one there that has the rates if you had to hire a police officer, what it costs, if you have to put a barricade, all of that, to sort of give you a guide of what to work for. If you want me to do it in a different format, I'd be more than happy to do it, but the spreadsheet is just, it's incredible because the amount of lines and different things that people are charging for. Three of the towns that you have in that packet actually have an application fee that you have to pay the $5 before they even look at the application. I don't think that's something that we want to do, but that's in there as well. I sent out a communication to the businesses for the Save the Green Project, which is New Jersey Natural Gas. And probably the most important thing in my report tonight is I did have phone conversations with the four meter companies for parking meters. Narrowed it down to one, and we did a site tour yesterday. That's the booklet that's in front of you. And the recommendation obviously is to go with the tower rather than meters because there's no place to put the poles. You got to carry inventories. This company is the one that does Red Bank, Asbury Park. They just signed down with Belmar. They're in New York. They are state licensed. They are state-approved vendor till 2022. They have both the app and the tower in the tour that we did. If we got one tower to start, that can take a short drive and, I'm sorry, Shore Boulevard and the Scoobalot. And their recommendation is to push the app as much as possible so you don't have to get as many towers. Councilman Brazwell and I were speaking earlier. I don't think you can just get the app and just use the app. I think you need to have a tower. And the beauty of these towers is, once you buy it, you own it. The cost is about $7,000. There's a $55 a month maintenance fee, and that's for the data collection. They use Verizon, AT&amp;T, whoever we want. And we can use whatever credit card provider we currently use, or we can use theirs. We can compare rates because they might even have a better rate than we do because of the amount of things that get processed through. And the towers are mobile in a way that if we wanted to put one here or start off with two and move one someplace else. So for example, if we wanted to take the, if we're going to use that, where the municipal building was is a lot, just throw gravel down. The recommendation he had, if you go to page eight, there's three different types. One is by number, one is by space, and one is by license plate. His recommendation was to go with the license plate. And the reason for the license plate is a police officer, code enforcement officer, special officer, whoever's going to be issuing the tickets and monitoring this can go down with the app, enter the first two letters of the license plate as long as it's visible, and they can see how much time is left on that. Then you don't have to worry about numbering. You don't have to worry about striping. You can basically take this tower, put this tower almost any place that you wanted. They are very, very flexible. He's willing to come and do a presentation if we want. He will bring a sample of the tower. The tower is solar-powered, so we don't have to worry about electric. There's no battery in it. There's three or four electronic components that are up on top of the tower, and it's constructed in such a way that I guess it's water-resistant or won't rust. It's stainless steel, but it's made for the type of environment that we have here.
How big is this town?
I'm not really sure. It's the ones that are in all the other towns, so I guess it's about, I guess it's about this high? Is that about right? I think it's about that.
Yeah, about shoulder height.
About shoulder height. So if they get the app, they can pay by the app. They don't have to go to the tower. If they're on the ferry, they can add more money, send reminders. It's just, it's a very, very, I'm sure they're smarter out there. I mean, there's another one that you can just use an app, but I think we need a tower and stuff like that. The other thing that I need to mention is you can do just credit card and app pay, or you can add cash. My suggestion, and this is my recommendation because I already work in a town that has cash, you have to deal with the cash. You've got to collect the cash. You've got to count the cash. You've got to make sure it's full. And then you've always got the opportunity of somebody wanting to think they're going to rob you. And that's pretty much it. If anybody's got any questions on the parking meters or anything I reported.
Is the pay-by-plate one $7,000? Or is it, are they all roughly in that ballpark?
No, there are others that are, I didn't get the prices of the others. This is the only one after talking to them because it was the one that was in the area that I came in and we did an actual site tour. Because they do a free consultation. He came in. We rode around town. We spent a lot of time together going up and down Bay Avenue. We went down first. We went down the other streets, even though we might not want to put something there, but just to give him a flavor of what was going on in the town. And then his recommendation was, you know, if we were going to be concerned, for example, that somebody would take the ferry and they'd walk two or three blocks not to pay whatever the amount is, a dollar an hour, whatever it is, what you can do is you just put signs up and make it a three-hour parking limit. Because the people on the ferry are going to be allowed in there three hours anyway, to be a deterrent. Whether or not you police it up is completely up to us, but that's what he suggested we do it. They have samples of signs, anything that we need, but.
My only concern is if it's, they're only licensed and sold for 2022, what happens if they don't get recertified?
We already have purchasing units, so that's only for purchasing purposes.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? If you want, I can set up a meeting for demonstration. I don't know how you want to proceed. He said it's going to take about eight weeks if it's something we wanted to do because the amount.
That's my question. How long until?
Yeah, it's about eight weeks. He says especially now that Belmar's signing on because Belmar's going to get, they're going to do the whole town. So I think, I think, I think we might only want one or two to get started. But I think if, and I know we need to write the ordinances and statutes and stuff, but I think they can run in parallel. So this is something we can have by Memorial Day if we work it.
I've got a problem from the gate as well. Insert it in the picture.
Do you want to come here and do a demonstration?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't need a demonstration because I.
Exactly.
I don't do demonstrations.
I just say that I don't like that are in Asbury.
Yeah.
They have, yeah, they have them in Asbury. They have them.
They're Red Bank, too, all of them. Yeah.
They have them in Hoboken.
Oh, I don't think, is this the red thing?
Yeah.
Is it, are they in the new ones?
Right. Well, I think they're doing part of Red Bank. I think they're the second ones that just came in. Right, because they had a problem with the first one.
Okay.
Yeah. This is not the problem, John.
So what do we want to do?
I want to do it.
Go around and insert it.
I want to do it.
Please, we go around and see. I want to do it too. I just need to figure out.
So.
What's the first area?
What, what, what he?
I would also include our borough engineer at that point because our borough engineer does parking. They did the Red Bank, and they've done Asbury.
What do you mean, a parking unit?
For what, what tower covers what areas for the metering of the.
So they'll tell us like what the best placement is?
Yeah, okay. I would be really interested in finding out if there's a way to do it. If you're not doing cash, then I think there's no reason to have a tower whatsoever. The whole thing can be done on your app, which gives you a lot, a lot of flexibility.
But why don't you have a phone that's charged?
Yeah, but you have to not just do an app. You can also do a credit card. I think an app and a credit card, because some, I'm going to tell you what. You're going to have older people that come into town. And I know this because I had to do this for my boss in Red Bank. I had to download the app because she had no idea what the heck she was doing. So I think it would be a big deterrent for an older generation to have to download.
So you need to do your credit cards.
Not everybody uses cell phones anymore.
No.
That's true.
And if the cell tower is down, if we have.
Yeah, so I kind of think your credit card and.
Well, if the cell tower goes down, especially the one that they use, then the tower's not going to work either.
Well, they will use whatever phone service we ask them to use. And his recommendation, because I was going towards one tower to get it initiated, was using the Scoobalot and using the corner that's closest to Water Witch and on Shore. So it's like that corner there because then some of the people will have to walk a distance to come up, but it'll take care of that parking lot. Or we could do the other side too, but it was a little narrower.
Why are you all going to go with one, Ryan?
Why, yeah.
Because it's so ahead and.
I mean, where are you going to have, first of all, if I'm coming into this town and I have to walk five to six blocks to go, I was going to say, to hell with you. I'm not going here. I'm going someplace else. So I think we have to have it, and that's where I think you're right with the engineer to figure out how many feet we need to have it for the towers or to have the station, whatever they're called.
And I'm going to bring something up here. I mean, I would imagine we would need it by the lot on Bay Avenue, but what is the decision? When is that going to be?
Still engineering.
Any idea when it's coming out of there?
What, this, what, I didn't hear what you said.
The lot.
171.
Bay Avenue lot.
So we have to finalize the budget and see how we're going to do it. Are we going to cash pay it? Are we going to have CPW workers work on it?
But do we have a number, a finalized number?
What was the number, 275?
I think we also have to figure out what we're going to do with residents. Should residents have to pay?
Yeah, I mean, they can get a parking pass. You can pay for a parking pass, probably. I know in my prior town, it was $25 a year per vehicle, and you have to park in any metered spot without having to meter.
The only thing is when you start doing that.
People are going to park in the Scoobalot who live up on the hill who want to ride the ferry, and that's not really.
Well, that's why when you do the ordinance, you have to look at it. Are you going to allow more than 24-hour parking? Maybe there is times, you know, you have to limit the amount of, the length of parking.
Like we did in the parks, the parking lots adjacent to parks, so that that's not overnight in somebody's trailer or boat or whatever was there for the season.
And if you're parking to go to the ferry and you live up on the hill, you're going to try and park in the C Street lot that's free instead of paying for it.
Not if you have a $25 a year parking pass.
Right now, I can park for free, people. So.
Yeah, but if, listen, if you're riding that boat and it only costs you $25 for the entire year to park in any spot, even if it's metered here, that's a great, it's so cheap, it's a fallback. And that's not really the purpose, right, of the Scoobalot? We don't want ferry riders. It's inappropriate for ferry riders parking there for the entire day.
Well, then you have a three-hour limit. So we have to put a three-hour limit.
That's, I don't really like the three-hour limit either. What if you want to spend the entire day going from restaurant to restaurant, Carolyn's shop and somebody else's shop and, right? I guess if you have the app, you can just keep filling it, right?
I don't care if the ferry, if ferry passengers park there. I just don't want any people parking there overnight and for days and days and days. So as long as they're gone by the end of the day, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Go ahead, Kim.
Can I just say a couple comments during the workshop?
Go ahead.
But as the person in this room that lives across the street from that lot, half those cars are residents. So when you're thinking about putting in a meter and charging people who buy a house because there's a municipal lot across the street that's free, I'm going to be pretty pissed if you're going to make me pay $25 or you're going to make my debt hang up in that lot. It's me off and it's my neighbors off. And not just me, but all the people down Central and Ocean who don't have parking. They can fatlock. They use that. It's not just ferry people in that area.
That's true, but I think other towns deal with this too, that have parking meters. And that's why they have the permits for them.
Especially when I moved here, it was free.
Do you have a garage?
I didn't.
Do you have a driveway?
I didn't.
I think that, I'm sorry, but I mean, I'm going to say it. I think that residents should be using their garages and their driveways. I, you know, instead of storing all kinds, and I don't know what your garage is like, I'm just.
I forgot my garage.
And using it in generalities, but I think that we should be encouraging residents, especially on Bay and the business district, to actually use their garages and their driveways so that we can open up these other areas for the businesses that we're actually trying to, you know, we're trying to develop and the whole area. We want to make it a downtown area, so I think that we have to be cognizant of that.
You're absolutely right, London.
So when I have somebody, if I have people who want to come visit me, I'm going to tell them, don't come to my little, little community.
In Red Bank, where they could pay for parking too.
I'll go get you a lot of enough silver.
There's only four places, there's only four places to go in Little Silver. My sister lives there. She's. You know what, and I understand what you mean, but it's not always taken by residents. And there's ways, like I'm thinking what the system is in Hoboken. If my, if my family has a party on an off day, not like a holiday, and they have, we have to pay for parking wherever you have to park in Hoboken, it's paying the neck. You can get permits from the town, and that's what they do in California for the towns. Like every resident can get a certain amount of permits.
Visitor passes.
Visitor passes, yeah. So maybe that's something that can be worked out, but.
I already pay nothing taxes. If you're going to make me pay $25 to my boyfriend to park on the street so we don't have to drop the cars every morning and every night?
Anyway, we're not talking about the street. We're talking about the lot right now.
Oh, well, it was talked about Bay, you know, Bay Avenue, it's not just the lot.
I think there's a lot to think about.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's lots of lots. And there's no, there's no silver bullet. There's no easy answer. And there's a lot of things we have to look into because we never had faith for parking before. So if we are going to convert borough lots into paid parking, with an exception for a resident to get a pass or maybe guess passes or something else, or all of the above, we just need to figure out what is going to work the best for everybody involved.
Yes.
And it's one of those things where.
And for residents who don't need street parking, free passes to park on Shore Drive, the permit parking area, why can't I get a permit, at least one permit, to use the lot? Wouldn't it be easier to decide to go permit parking on the street?
Well, that's a, that's a town.
I actually have an issue with the free permit as well, though, because you figure that cost is reflected to every taxpayer for people to get permits if they're not paying for the permit. Takes up employees' time, and we do pay for the actual permits that we do get. That was put in before I was the administrator. We should always offset, you know, your fees to the best we can, even if it's $5, $3, whatever it is, just to offset that amount.
So when we go into this more, we'll discuss, put that into it.
And again, Martin venting the wheels, this is done not just in New Jersey, but in other countries.
California, we could do it.
We'll look into best practices, and we'll be back and discuss more.
Absolutely.
I don't object to the meter and the parking. Having that, having a meter or even for a drive-by meter, I object to having a paid parking.
But you don't, you have a garage and you have a driveway.
And I have a boyfriend. I don't want to drop the cars.
But you could also park on the street, right? Because I'm, I mean, I'm going to be faced with the same situation on Bay Avenue. I have a garage, which I could put a car in. I have a driveway, which I can fit two cars in, but if I have visitors.
You're also not having to drop the cars all the time.
No, well, not really, but if I have, no, not when my girls are home. I actually do. But if we put meters on Bay Avenue at some point, my visitors are going to have to pay to park on Bay Avenue. I don't object to that because, you know, we're trying to develop a downtown area and that, that's our goal, and that honestly, it's commonplace in the downtown area, so.
We have to go into that.
Yeah.
Sorry?
We have to go into that.
Yeah. We have a lot to do, so I am making a motion to go into that.
One second.
Rose, do your second.
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting of February 5, 2020 is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law and was included in the list of meeting notices transmitted to the Two River Times and the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on February 3, 2020. The meeting notices remain continuously posted as required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Proper notice having been given, the municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of the meeting. All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Now I'll call the roll. Councilmember Brazwell.
Here.
Councilmember Mizola.
Here.
Council President Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Valkos.
Here.
Mayor Bruyan.
Here.
All the president's quorum is formed. Did you want Mr. Romar to go first?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Be a quick engineering update. As I'm sure you're aware, most of the construction that we've seen in the last few months has been wrapped up or is in the process of wrapping up. Over on Cornwell &amp; John, we do have some punch list items remaining that I want the contractor to address. You'll see them out there a few more times doing some final restoration, and then we'll work with the DOT to close out the grant and the overall contract. As previously reported, we're still under the contract amount to date. The Borough has received the first order of replacement concrete culvert lids for the North Street culvert system. As soon as we get some good weather, your Public Works Department is going to work on installing the first few sections. The second set of replacement lids has not been worried yet. We want to make sure they work well and you're able to handle them here in-house. And then we can coordinate the second order to complete that repair project. Jones Creek, Cedar Street, Bulkheads, those plan specs are ready to go. As soon as funding is certified to be in place, we'll coordinate the public bid. Later on your agenda for council consideration, you'll see some engineering work being proposed. North Street pump station, as you're aware, the pump has, the pump and motor has failed. There is a temporary large diesel pump currently servicing that pump station itself. We're going to work with your Public Works Department to temporarily replace the diesel pump with a temporary electric pump that will be submerged within the wet well itself while the new pump is manufactured and supplied. There's a little lead time associated with that. Also, in our proposed scope of work is coordination to upgrade the electrical system, the control system, and specify some bulkheading and culvert and check valve repair work associated with that pump station. So under your emergency deck that you had at a previous meeting, we're hopefully going to be able to do a nice upgrade to the complete system. That's it at this point, unless you have any questions on other projects. I'd be happy to answer.
When do you think engineering will be complete? And a rough estimate for the conversion of the 171 Bay Avenue property into parking?
My understanding is our request for authorization to do the work hasn't been responded to yet. So if we're authorized, I apologize, but I didn't think we were authorized to start yet. No?
No, we didn't bring forward a proposal yet. We want to see if DPW can do it or if we need contractors.
And it would be nice to see costs either way because we're trying to plan ahead. And if part of those costs has a permeable asphalt, could be looked at as well, just as a side-by-side comparison.
Yeah, absolutely. Part of our proposed scope of work is to perform some hand augers to understand the subsurface materials, how well they can accept runoff through a pervious material, and to understand where season-high water table is too, if it makes sense to try to put water in the ground at that point. So we would do, yeah, very early on, we could do a cost comparison of the two systems, and we'll move forward with the full design.
Perfect. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Engineering?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dismissed. Is the Bay Shore Y joining us today or not?
She will not be. She asked to be rescheduled to February 19th.
The next item on other business might be a little bit premature. I'd ask to get, to see what Jiff insurance cost would be in the discussion of possibly retooling Frank Hall Park, which many people don't even know where it is and that it exists, into a dog park. So did you get any numbers for that?
I don't have numbers back yet of any increase in insurance right now. What I did get back was from our borough attorney's office on there doesn't seem to be any state restrictions on us doing so, which is good to start with. We would just have to come up with a plan, a vote, a plan. And he gave me, you know, a few different items that we could roust and we could go with that.
The park itself is very rarely used. It has a lot of overgrown vegetation, a lot of invasive English ivy that comes up the trees and then strangles the trees, and now the trees are dead, and now we're going to have to take them down before they fall on somebody. There's also a large spruce tree that's in the center of the park that in the summertime, when people think of the ester there every once in a while. Yeah. Also, there's a lot of English ivy that goes up the cyclone fence that separates the park from the townhouses that were recently built on Shore Drive.
So for those of you that don't know where Frank Hall Park is, because I, who have lived here my whole life, never knew that there was a name to that place.
Ah, it's Miller Street.
I do now. It's in the center of Miller Street, across from the mural, so it's really the center of town.
Exactly, so it's the center of town. It's not uptown, it's not downtown, it's in the middle, it's a nice place to walk when you're walking your dog. And a park that's dedicated to one of our former mayors could finally be enjoyed by the people of the borough.
Well, it has been enjoyed by some people of the borough.
For nefarious purposes, yeah. But anyway, this is where the discussion just came from and as we find out more, we'll update and get more feedback.
Yeah, and is it something that you guys want to move forward with? Do you want me to look further into?
I want to get as much intel before we launch to move on anything.
Okay.
And we suggest that you look at the Monmouth County and Ocean County websites because they have all parts and certain rules and restrictions, regulations, all available on their site.
I'll forward it to you, I'll forward this to you so that way you guys can.
Okay, introductions and setting public hearing dates.
First, we have ordinance 20 dash, oh, 20 dash 04, an ordinance amending section 4-9.1 of the Borough Code to clarify mercantile license requirements.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Public hearing is set for February 19th. Next, we have an ordinance amending chapter 2, 24 dash 3 of the Borough Code to revise the length of service award program point schedule.
I'll offer that.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have ordinance, the public hearing on that is set for February 19th. Next, we have ordinance 20 dash 06, an ordinance amending section 2-8.5 of the Borough Code to clarify eligibility of new construction of certain dwellings for tax abatements.
I will offer that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, public hearing is set for February 19th. Next, we have the public hearing and final adoption of ordinance O-20-02, an ordinance amending chapter 2 of the revised general ordinance of the Borough Highlands that established the recreational committee advisory within the Borough Highlands.
I will offer it. This is public portion.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion at the table? No. Then I'll open it to the public.
Can Squorka short drive, just wondering why we're getting rid of the recreation committee?
Um, this year, after discussions with council president and with the administrator, we found that in the past, it was very confusing to the employees when they had a committee and then there's also a department and then you've got a department head, then you also have the liaison and the employees were confused as to who they should be taking direction from. Employees should always follow the chain of commands. They never should take direction from council directly. It should always be through their department heads and through the administration.
Okay, so was the recreation, maybe not, were they not bringing anything to the table? Or is there?
We've hired employees. The reason that we started the committee was because we only had one employee and then a couple of part timers. So, we hired employees, so we are leaving it to the employees to do the work of the employees.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Are we speaking with the recreation committee?
Yeah.
Katie Reed, seven, Snug Harbor Avenue, and hockey tonight, sorry. I would like to know, and I've talked to several of you on the side, but I wanted to know what the plans are for the recreation center being open and if you could consider maybe a joint use thing. I know there were some concerns about.
That's not about what this ordinance is about.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't believe it, so.
No, that's fine. This ordinance was about the recreation committee, which we're not having the recreation committee anymore because we hired people to run the recreation departments?
Okay, well, maybe the people that are running the recreation department would consider having the recreation center open for events because it's been really popular and I heard they're not doing it anymore and I'd like for them to consider maybe sharing space or something because it is a popular thing and we've had numerous parties in the last three years in this facility and it's great and no other town around has something like this, so I would really like to see it remain.
Okay. Anything else regarding the recreation committee? Okay, I'll close public portion.
Do I have an offer?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan. Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, the ordinance is passed. Next, we have ordinance 20 dash 03, an ordinance amending Borough Code 16 dash 3 retail food establishment to update fee provisions to match those required by the Monmouth County Board of Health.
Does anyone have any questions as to why we are putting this ordinance in place? Just for a little background, we have switched over from which health department we're using and because we're using a different health department, they have different rules and different fee schedules and such, and we just need to come in line since we're using this different department. Does anyone have any comments at the table? No. Close public portion. I'll make the offer.
I'll second.
Offered by Mayor Breon, second by Councilmember Mizola, Councilmember, Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, the ordinance is passed. Next, we have resolutions. Resolution 20 dash 063, a resolution authorizing payment of bills.
I understand there's going to be a motion to call clearing Alfieri entry on the payment of the bills list from this, you voted on separately. Is there an offer for that motion?
I'll offer it.
Do I have a second?
Can I second it?
No.
No, okay.
Councilmember Braswell, I'm assuming you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining from the one bill.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
Motion to remove the Cleary Alfieri bill passes. So, we're going to vote on the payment of bills without the Cleary Alfieri bill and Councilmember Braswell, you can vote on this because you're no longer conflicted out. Do I have an offer?
I'll offer it.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, payment of bills is passed. Now, I'm going to ask for an offer of the payment of the separated bill for Cleary Alfieri.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Braswell is abstaining. Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, the bill is passed to approve to be paid. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 064, a resolution authorizing amendment to the 2020 temporary budget.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 065, a resolution approving tax lien cancellation.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 066, a resolution authorizing the refund of a bulk permit fee.
I'll offer it.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 067, a resolution appointing a part-time payroll clerk, administrative assistant for the Borough Highlands.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 068, a resolution amending the schedule of meetings for the mayor and council of the Borough Highlands for the calendar year 2020. However, just for the record, I wanted to note, I think maybe you wanted a change to this, so if you wanted to table this for the workshop start date times, did you want flexibility in that?
What say the table? Since we're amending this, you want to have a flexibility.
What say the table about the table or what say the table about the amendment?
The table about the amendment.
I think that we need to have the flexibility.
I think we need flexibility, so. So, 6:00 or 6:30?
Yes.
Okay. Does all agree?
We should be able to let the residents know by a week ahead of time.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we want to change in the second paragraph, workshop meetings will begin at 6:00 or 6:30 P.M. Accordingly, it is amended. Do I have a motion as amended?
As amended, yes.
I'll second.
Wait a second, I think some of these dates are.
Uh, the, the November 13th, it was moved from November 11th to November 13th because
11th is a, is Veterans Day.
Correct. The 13th is a Friday. You moved it to the Friday last year, that's why I did it this year. Would you, do you want to amend that to the 12th?
It's not a Lamey's Day, right?
No, Lamey's.
No, it would be, yeah, the first Thursday.
What do we do to the Thursday?
Yes.
I love you all, but I don't want to spend Friday night with you.
Yeah, should be the tw- yeah, I was looking at that date.
So, amending that to the 12th and amending the time to 6:00 or 6:30 P.M. As amended, do I have a motion?
As amended, I'll offer.
As amended, I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. As amended. Resolution 20 dash 069, a resolution authorizing the execution of a shared services agreement between the Borough of Highlands and the County of Monmouth through the Monmouth County Sheriff's Office Communications Division.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Uh, just one second. Uh, we next have the administrative amendment to resolution 20 dash 070. It's just amending the date on page two of the start date. It was 5:15 and moved it back to 5:01. Correct, R20, that's what I meant, my apologies. Uh, this is resolution R20 dash 070, a resolution amending resolution R20 058 to authorize participation under the state health benefits plan and or the state employees' health benefits plan.
I'll offer it.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Sorry about the typo on that, too. I'll correct that. Uh, resolution 20 dash 071, I believe there was a.
We can table that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell. Uh, which date do you want to table this to, the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Councilmember Braswell. Uh, we're tabling it to the 19th. This is a motion to table to the 19th.
The table, oh, okay, all right, yes.
Uh, Council, uh, Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered, table to February 19th. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 072, a resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for professional services for improvements to the North Street Pump Station.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have resolution R20 dash 073, a resolution approving an updated emergency operations plan.
Just wondering, we also want to table.
I believe we also are going to tell you this for February 19th.
For the next meeting, I believe that'll give enough time for everyone to chat with OEM.
Okay, so on the table, do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell, table for February 19th.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered.
Can we request to have that sent to us?
No, it's, it's, you have to go to the office, it's about this thick.
Is that the OEM plan?
Yeah.
That's, um, that's just a resolution saying that we can use mutually for the OEM.
And any updates that they did for the previous year, because I've.
Were there updates to the plan?
Um, there weren't any updates to the plan, this is actually just to utilize the county and any other shared services.
That's the mutual aid plan, this is the operations plan.
I, I don't, I personally didn't even receive anything for operations plan. I think it's the only thing that was updated was the mayor.
Did you get an update?
No, that's what I'm saying, we need to table this.
Yeah, yeah.
Next, we have resolution R20 074, a resolution commemorating the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment. Did anybody want to make any comment on this?
This is a resolution that is commemorating the centennial of a woman's right to vote.
Should have worn your white, wore a white tonight.
So, in this year 2020, we are celebrating what happened 100 years ago and that women were given the right to vote.
And we will do another celebration in November, right?
Yeah, do more of a celebration at the end of the year.
I know that Atlanta Highlands, the purple lights, we shall have something done in September, November, November, right?
I think it was November, too.
Yeah, I think it's November.
Nationwide is August 26th, February 9th is the New Jersey ratification.
There you go.
Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
I'll make it.
Mayor Breon, and a second. Council President Ryan. Councilmember Braswell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola.
Yes.
Council President Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos.
Yes.
Mayor Breon.
Yes.
So ordered.[1677.62] Next, we have Resolution R20-075, a resolution authorizing the borough's participation in the Clean Ocean Action 35th Annual Spring and Fall Beach Sweeps.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola?
Yes.
Council President Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos?
Yes.
Mayor Breon?
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have Resolution 20-076, a resolution certifying completion of improvements pursuant to contract for the construction of restrooms and related facilities at Snug Harbor Beach and the community center.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Mizola?
Yes.
Council President Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Valkos?
Yes.
Mayor Breon?
Yes.
So ordered.
Does anyone have any updates from their committees that they would like to share with the public?
Yes. Calendar, ours is delayed. Went out to the printer, hoping it'll be done by either the end of this week or the beginning of next week, and then we'll be distributing it. Communications is working on updating our website. Not updating, but providing different ideas to make our website better. Kind of split into three different groups to tackle it, it's a large project. And then I'll move on to the Green Team. Green Team is actually a quick meeting because we were kind of regrouping. I am going to try to reach out to adjoining towns to hopefully make a bigger Green Team, like a big Green Team. I think we might be able to get more done if it was, you know, we had surrounding towns joined in because we all faced the same issues. And then we're going to continue to work on sustainability in New Jersey, so that should be fun.
Well done.
Yeah.
I'll weigh in with the Open Space Committee. We had our first committee meeting and the committee has agreed that we obviously have to update our open space plan. It was formed and created in 2008. It's very old and, you know, at some point, the county will not be willing to give us any more grants or matching grants or even consider them if the open space plan is too old. So with that being said, we do have a proposal to update the plan and the committee is now discussing what type of fundraisers or different types of events maybe that we can have or participate in so that we possibly could raise some money. And really, more than the money is raise awareness as to what we're trying to do and how it affects the borough.
Thank you.
We haven't met yet. Listen, I gave my report last night.
Anything else from the table?
The only thing I would like to do is to wish our Borough Administrator a happy birthday. Yesterday was her birthday. And the only good thing is she's getting closer in age to the majority of us on this. I said the majority. But, thanks. Happy birthday. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'll open it up for public portion.
Ken Skorka, Short Drive. I just want to make sure I understood Katie's question earlier. Are we no longer renting out the community center for events and parties?
We have not come to that determination yet.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to just add a couple of points to ponder for the discussion from the workshop about the parking meter and I just want to make sure that you realize that if you do put in the parking meter to get C Street people to pay, that you may not get all the revenue you're banking on or that you project because they'll just go to Atlantic Highlands. When we put in the permit parking, I know of at least two people that said, "I'm not going to Highlands, I'm not going to risk a ticket, I'm just going to go to Atlantic where I know I can park." And you think it's going to help with the traffic issues by pushing people to Atlantic Highlands, it's not because I see people I know in town speeding, blowing stop signs, not stopping for pedestrians, so it's really not going to solve anything. And I want to discuss the traffic control again. I understand we're waiting on the county for some things and I understand that our police department doesn't have the manpower to do all the controls that I'd like to see. And I think we just need to start thinking outside the box. And I hate taking parking on this, but it keeps happening. Last week, my boyfriend and I were walking our dogs, it was dark out and no one saw... We were in the crosswalk, like I've been told, you know, just in shoulder area, we still had the signs in front of us, so we weren't going to get hit. My boyfriend was holding flashlight in strobe mode. My one dog had his LED harness on and lit. My dog has a harness with a headlight, my foster dog. And I have that blue jacket, which I hate because I don't want to run around town looking like Smurfette, and I should've brought it with me. I had a bright pink hat that you put a button and there's LED lights in the brim. And I am standing there, looking at oncoming traffic, nobody stopped. But, I should say, at least a dozen cars refused to stop. Somebody finally did and then yet again, somebody tried to pull around and thankfully saw us standing there on the shoulder trying to cross the street. Car wouldn't gotten far, there's pylons and the signs in the crosswalk, but this is an ongoing problem and it needs to stop. And then a couple of days after that, on Wednesday, the 29th, the 8:35 boat arrived. Sitting in my living room, I don't know, boot condos are 20 feet wide, there's five of them, a little bit of extra space, 100 feet, maybe, a little bit more? Loud bang. How was that? Set my dogs off. Turns out, a car rear-ended another car at the intersection of Shore and Central. I don't know if anybody was hurt. I do know there was enough damage that one of the cars had to be towed, maybe both, I'm not quite sure. It's... I can't say they were commuters, could've been a couple of locals just got caught up in the ferry traffic. People are speeding, they're tailgating, they're not paying attention. This very easily could've been me or my dogs or your family members in between these two cars. Or in front of them, one car that just wasn't paying attention, it didn't stop on time. Back to thinking outside the box. We have an audience at C Street and that seems to be one of our pain points. Maybe we hire a marketing team to come in and figure out how to advertise, target, promote awareness that one of these drivers is going to kill somebody one day. Maybe, and I've shared this article a number of times on Facebook with various council members over the years, I'm thinking with some of the police chiefs, there's a town that put an unused police car with a mannequin in the driver's seat and people slowed down. They might have to change it after a couple of days when people realize what's going on and know that I don't have to stop. Or maybe, you spot out the mannequin for a real police officer and you actually catch the people who were just starting to blow by this dummy in the cop car. That's what I've got for now. I'll keep thinking about it, but we need to hit this at all angles. We can't just sit and wait for the county to figure this out for us. When we're doing road projects, if we could start putting curb bump outs like they have in Seabright, I think that'd be helpful, too. Because you'd stop having the car... I wish, I wish I had known about this, I wish we'd put the curb bump outs when we repaid Short Drive. I think it would help a lot, it would at least avoid the cars who are coming up on the shoulder trying to run me over. And I mean, I know you all don't like me. All right, I know some of the town doesn't like me, but, you know, try not to run me over, that's why I brought a blue jacket. I don't want to give anybody an excuse.
Now I'm going to have to call you Smurfette, though.
Katie Reed, Stevens, Snug Harbor Avenue. I guess I left the hat out of the bag of why I'm here. I would like to know why the community center is not open for rental. I would like to please...
I never said the community center is not open for rental.
Well, I did talk to some other people, I didn't just talk to you, and right now it's not currently being rented and I hear...
It's something that we're talking about.
Okay, but I just wanted to express my concern and say, it's really a great thing for the town. We've had, the Dempsey family reunion was on the beach, it was like 150, like half the town. I mean, there were so many pardons and everybody enjoyed the space. I know that Scott and Amy had their daughter's graduation party there, we had a big birthday party here. I just really want to, I hope you guys could reconsider or just share the space for however it works out.
Katie, I have a question, though. Did you contact to rent the facility and you were turned down?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I wasn't the only one. There was three people that I know of that have been told, "Right now, we're not renting the facility."
Okay.
We're not taking any rentals.
Because we have not made any...
And it's communion season.
Decision about whether to rent out this place or not, we're still discussing it amongst ourselves.
Well, they're not, they're not accepting reservations. I'd like to make a reservation if we could do that right now.
No, no.
So it's just a great thing and people from other towns come here and they're like, "Wow, like, this is such a cool place and you can rent it." Like, it just has been a very positive...
No, I just think it's more of a concern that you're being told that it's not being rented out and that's not the issue right now.
Right now, we have not made any decision.
Okay, and then talk tomorrow.
We've asked, we have, we've talked about what's the direction do we want to go in?
Right.
We've hired recreation staff to make more recreation programs. If renting it out is going to get in the way of recreation programming?
Right.
Then we have to make the decision, do we go with programming or renting out for parties?
And I understand that, too. I understand that, too, but maybe there could be a calendar and you guys pick your favorite spots and then the other spots that are left over. I just don't shut it completely down because people do use it and they enjoy it and it's been very beneficial to not only the people renting it, but like, I live up the street, I love seeing big parties over here. And they stop at like 10 o'clock, which is good, this, you know. But I just think it's a really positive thing, you know, there was communion here, there were so many different functions. So just saying to please consider all aspects before you decide that it's not... And charge more money! I mean, you could use your Innen Resident Discount, I appreciate that. Charge more money, people will pay more money. I called Long Branch, my parents are turning 70, we grew up right over there.
How much do they charge them?
They're under remodel right now. And I didn't want to go to Long Branch anyway, but I'm trying to come up with a backup plan. But, I mean, they charge more than what we charge here and the other places...
Our fees are also being looked at for a number of reasons.
Yes, so I mean, I wouldn't have an objection to that, I think you are a little cheap, but I'm pursuing that, but I just charge more after June. So I just wanted to express, like, we really do enjoy it, it's a great thing.